Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order a special meeting of the Jackson City Council this afternoon at 3:05 PM on November the 6th. We just have five items on the agenda. The purpose of this agenda really, well, the meeting was to come together and to finalize and to really formalize the resolutions that we proposed and discussed during the legislative committee meeting. And so what we have before us, primarily, the first two items deal with items that we would like for the legislature to consider this year in their 2025 session that would help our city. And then, because we had a special city council meeting, we had three different items that were added by different departments, which I think hopefully shouldn't take too long. So with that, any announcements, colleagues? All right. So with that, will the clerk please get item number one on the floor?
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi for the passage of legislation to create a land bank for the elimination of blight and to amend the open carry law to restrict firearms in certain public locations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. These actually have been somewhat perennial items. We've had them on our legislative agenda for, I know, land bank probably, Mr. Foot, can you help me remember? I believe at least six or seven years. I believe that-
2017.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Mr. Banks remembers. It was our first year in office that we have had a perennially the land bank proposal on the agenda. It's never gotten anywhere in the, before the legislature, but I guess it doesn't hurt to keep asking. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Thank you. I tried to read through one of the previous land bank legislative attempts, or it was one that didn't pass. It's never passed. And I had a hard time even understanding what it was about. And I'm not convinced that, based on my efforts to try and understand the getting funds for the blighted property, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to go. I think, I'm of the opinion that we make the case that we're going to be good stewards of the money that comes to us, and we've identified the issue and understand the issue, come up with ways to, you know, either demolish or put the used property back to proper usage with people that are going to be good stewards of it, and then ask for dollars, specifically ask for dollars from the state and federal level to address the blight, rather than to go through a land bank situation, which I don't even, I couldn't even understand what the legislation was doing and how it was going to accomplish that. And I know the fact that, because of the lack of trust at the state legislature, they're not going to pass a land bank anyway, even if we ask for it. So I think we're better off just asking for $20 million or something like that, rather than a land bank that then we have to turn around and operate.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you. I understand wholeheartedly Mr. Foot's approach, especially, you know, it's based on a lot of ifs. If we get the 20 million, you know, I think that there's an appetite with other cities, Hattiesburg, Meridian, other cities that need land bank legislation as well. And I think a joint effort, sometimes you got to keep plowing at it. One of the things that it would help, a lot of our, the properties that are blighted belong to the state. Well, instead, those properties within the city or the municipality of Jackson will be in our bank. We won't have to worry about all of the money to get those problems addressed, because we could donate those to those properties, or we can, you know, give them to certain entities that have the capacity to deal with them, to address them, and to turn them around. And it is something that works good in other cities outside of this state. This is how they get rid of a lot of their blight. And so, you know, tomato, tomato, your approach is an approach. I think all approaches are necessary with the blight problem that we have. So I just, I think that at this point, we just can't do one and not try to do the other. It's good that you and Councilman Harley are pushing for that, and I support it wholeheartedly. And I hope we get the 20 million. But at the same time, there might be properties in Washington D.C., and properties over by Winfield that the state owns, where there's a neighborhood association, or there's a church, or there is a university, or someone, or some nonprofit that has the capacity that will get it and will clean that property up and make it a garden, or make it a sitting area, a picnic area for that community, and it gives us more fluidity to deal with it instead of waiting on the state to say that we can go on to their properties that they're owning, the cities that are dilapidated and growing over anyway. And with that, I yield, and that's just my comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Hartley?
Well, you know, working with Councilman Foot, I tend to agree with, because we've been able to see it from a different perspective, tend to see, I tend to believe that maybe we need to approach this in phases. And I think the first phase would be to request the money and the cooperation. And then, we make that determination on how we're going to manage that. I think these properties would be a lot more appeasing to potential owners if we have them cleaned up. And if we can go ahead and get the state to pay that money, to have that cleaned up, then I think we should propose the land bank ideals, because we're going to need some kind of way in which to manage it. Also, I have a question on how did we end up tying in elimination of blight and the open carry law in the same ordinance, or in the same resolution? And to me, you know, it's two separate, different things. We have a problem with both, no doubt. But I think the land bank thing, I think is a place for it, and I welcome discussions on it. And I believe that it could do a lot to help. But I, you know, again, as Councilman Foot mentioned, meeting with the state, talking with the state, we've gotten a lot of cooperation for its cleanup. And if we can clean up, that'll make it easier to have an effective land bank and to be able to get more folks to purchase lands or to give them away to neighbors. We got to find out what we're dealing with first, and that's going to require money. And we're trying to desperately seek money from the state and the federal government. I believe that once we do that, then another part of that blight master plan is, okay, now how do we manage these properties? And I think a land bank would be the way to go, but I'm just not ready. I'm not ready to vote on it right now. I think it comes in another stage.
Thank you. I want to, I want to weigh in before, I don't think you really have to talk about that right now. But so when we had the legislative committee meeting, I think we all agreed, we were like mine, I believe, that what we wanted to do was prioritize some very specific financial asks, things that we felt like we could get. I can just about promise you that neither one of these things are going to see the light of day. And I think it's noise that we don't necessarily need to create at the Capitol this year. What I would like for us to do is look more carefully at the second resolution that lists all the financial requests, Mr. Wright, that you have spent a lot of time on. And I'm inclined to, I personally am going to not vote for this first resolution. I'm not going to support it, because I just don't think, even though I hear Mr. Banks and I understand what he's saying, I think what we need to do is go over with just a, some very specific financial request from the legislature this year that folks can understand, and let's see if we can't get these passed. I did talk to our lobbyist this weekend. She couldn't be here today, because she also has another job, and she's very busy with that job this afternoon. But she is just waiting on us to present to her what it is that we want her to go to the Capitol and fight for. And I think what we all agreed on in the legislative committee meeting was that we were going to have only a few asks that folks could understand, that we could go over and really, really fight for. And I believe we boiled it down to three main topics, and that was public safety, and blight elimination, and infrastructure, which included several subcategories. And folks, I just would like for us to continue to stay focused on that, if that is, unless somebody, you're welcome to strongly disagree with me, if anyone would like to. Mr. Foot?
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President?
Mr. Banks, I know you can't see, but Mr. Foot had his hand up first, and then I'll call on you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. We, I didn't say anything about the open carry, but down here at the bottom of the page that says, of the first page, number one, "Be it further resolved that the city of Jackson supports amending open carry laws in specific public locations. We aim to create a safer, more welcoming environment for all." But it doesn't say anything, so it's not clear to me what they hope to amend. I mean, I think it's a mistake also to have the open carry and the land bank together. It's confusing, and I think that lessens our, you know, our chance to get other things that are more specific. But I would be interested what they hope to, how they hope to adjust or amend the open carry law to make us safer. Is there a specific, is it-
I don't know. I don't know, Mr. Foot, but you may recall that we had this, you know, the mayor put this on the agenda a few years ago, and we got-
Are they going to, is maybe Chief Wade has, this is what we want, would like to have. If anything, it needs to be endorsed by the police-
Maybe, maybe instead of taking this to a vote today, maybe I just need to table it.
Whatever, okay.
But I'm frankly, I'm ready to just vote against both of them.
Yeah, I can't support it right now, but anyway, so I'm going to go to number two when you're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I was going to say, with your points, and Mr. Foot's points, and Mr. Hartley's points, and I didn't know that the open carry was in there as well. I think what you said, you know, going to address a specific ask, is going to be very fruitful for us. I think that our lobbyists is gifted and talented enough that if Toby Barker or Hattiesburg, if they decide to push land bank, we can tag along with them some other type of way without the resolution. So I think, you know, that's a good strategy.
All right, so, Mr. Banks, would you like to see this just be tabled till another time, or would, or maybe we could put it in committee? We can put it back in the legislative committee for additional study?
I don't, I don't know about tabling something that has open carry and land bank in it at the same time. I think that needs to go back. If land bank's going to come, it needs to come separate, and maybe it comes at the time when we find out what other municipalities are going to do, and we consult with our lobbyists, open carry, whatever recommendations the chief have or whatever, I think it needs to be more spelled out and brought back to the drawing board. I think that this one just needs to go back.
Go back, this is, yeah.
Drawn the second in the motion, yeah.
It wasn't in committee, Mr. Banks, so what I, so what we can do is just put it in committee? If you, do you agree with that?
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Brazil?
Just as an aside, I do recall land bank legislation being asked at MML meetings several times, and I know they're being pressured by several municipalities to make this legislative, one of their priorities for the legislative, their legislative agenda. And to Mr. Banks's point, if Hattiesburg is pushing this, at some point, we can probably find a creative way to join them, and, you know, just focus on what we can, you know, more pinpoint in our acts this year.
I agree with that, and so that's why I think-
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
With Mr. Brazil, and he's correct, maybe we do a resolution, we guess, you know, we can let this one die, or whatever, and we do a resolution for land bank legislation to MML, for MML, to join the other municipalities in MML that are supporting it.
Okay. I think since this is what is in front of us, Mr. Banks, I'm just going to put it in committee, and we can call another legislative committee meeting very quickly and deal with these issues.
Okay.
But I like your idea a lot, and frankly, I would like to see what MML is working on and what they've got, and it might be that we can just, you know, craft hours, tailor hours after what they're doing already. Do you, do you have that? Does anybody, do you have it, Mr. Brazil, what they have?
I don't have it. I was, you know, the meeting down in McComb, and even on the coast, there was a lot of buzz about it. I checked the website, they only have their 2024 priorities listed, so I think it'll be a good idea to kind of communicate with them, to kind of see where they are on that, and then move from there.
Let's, let's do that, colleagues. All right, I'm going to put this item in committee. Yes, who?
I would draw my second.
I would draw my motion.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. All right, we're going to move on now to item number two.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi requesting the approval of appropriations for the benefit of the city of Jackson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. This, colleagues, is a resolution that is really a catchall of all the things that we discussed in the legislative committee meeting. This is a format that our lobbyist felt like she could work with well, and it would serve her purposes. And just so you know, as soon as we can get this to her, she is going to schedule a meeting with the Heinz County delegation and start working on every one of these items. But I'm going to open this up, or whatever items y'all decide you want in here or not in here, but this is a format that she felt like would work, that she could work with well. And so with that, I'm going to open it up for questions, so that y'all may have some input. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we, everything has been, everything contained here is on the advice of Jack's Police Department and the Fire Department. Just, you guys, that is your recommendation.
Mr. Wright, you met with all the departments on this, right?
Yes, I did. They are all in agreement on this, in terms of the fire acts, as well as the police department.
Thank you, sir.
And you talked to everybody else about everything else.
These are coming from the departments.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other questions, colleagues? Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Madam President, if we could go down these one at a time, well, my first general question would be for the requests from the, regarding police funding for vehicles and license plate readers, and then the department, the Fire Department for fire trucks and fire engine trucks, and ladder trucks, and other supplies. Have we explored all the possible grant funding we might get along these same lines? That if we, I think there's more chance of us getting some funding if we've explored all the grant possibilities, and if the extent that we can get some of the grant monies, then ask the state to supplement the grant money we've already got, to show that we were being good, you know, resourceful and looking at all other possible resources to pay for our fire and police equipment.
Yes, and, yes, Mr. Foot, and I agree with you. And, you know, during the budget process, when the newly created budget, I mean, grant writing department was here, they assured us that they are looking for all of these dollars as well. But I hear what you're saying, and I think that is information our lobbyist is going to need as well, when she goes to the-
Right.
-Capitol. And so, Mr. Wright, would, could you just, why don't you run through just each one of these points with the, with the dollars, what we're asking for, and if you know whether or not we're currently pursuing, or Mr. Malinbecker knows, if we're, Mr. Malinbecker would know about the grants probably more so, why don't y'all tag team on this and just kind of make it, you know, just bullet point it for us?
All right. The first one is on the public safety in terms of Jackson Police Department, $1.2 million, with $1 million going toward vehicles, and the police department is saying they needed 20 additional vehicles. That's in addition to what the council has already approved during this budgeting period. The lobbyist has asked about federal grants, and the police department has responded and indicated that they have received some dollars for additional vehicles, and Mr. Malinbecker can talk more about that in terms of what they've received this year. But that's a constant ask from the police department in terms of grants, so this will help supplement what we're already getting.
Thank you. Why don't you go through, and then if Mr. Malinbecker can add to whatever you missed, because that was pretty thorough.
All right. The other one is license plate readers. We talked about that during the budget hearings, in terms of fighting crime, reading those license plates, and putting those license plates in the system, and it can track where that vehicle is going. You authorized and budgeted for some of those. This is asking the state for some additional funds in order for license plate readers, in order to fight crime. Okay? As I move to the Fire Department, the Fire Department is asking for some additional funds for, I think it was in the budget, in the acts last year, for a new fire station on State Street that will house a ladder truck and some other things. And the reason for that is that that fire station is outdated, it was built years ago, and it's helping to maintain not only the University Medical Center with this many stories that it has, but you have Bell Haven, Millsap, and you have that whole medical corridor right in there on State Street, Baptist Medical Center, and all of those things in the VA, as well as St. D. So this will help secure a station that can be used to cover fire in all of those areas. So that's why they're asking for the 200, right, the $200,000. No, no, I'm sorry, not 200, but $14.3 million, fire station, as well as ladder truck, rescue truck, and a fire engine. Okay? The other item, mine's just not in the order that this, so if I skip around, just-
Does he have the agenda, I mean, the resolution?
Let me go back to, yeah, here we go.
The next one is to, is, that I see is the 1.5 for pave, grade, widen roads-
Yeah, that's-
-for the industrial park.
Right, that's for the infrastructure. Here, we're asking for the Northwest Industrial Park to upgrade it, widen the road, put lighting in, and some security blue lights in that area, so that we can maintain the industries that are in that area. Centos is there, Antiges just on the outside of that industrial park, and there's some other manufacturing, industrial industries in that area that we want to make sure that we maintain that group in that area for economic development. The other one is regarding human and cultural services, some $8.4 million, and this is funding for the second phase of Thalamara. We have some funds, and we're looking for additional funds in terms of finishing Phase One, the mitigation of all the things that's going on at Thalamara. This will be Phase Two, in terms of the handicap elevator, the escalators, and doing some other things that's in that proposal for Phase Two. So that's a total of $8.4 million for, for all of those items, not only Phase Two, but also the stage rigging, curtains, and all of those kinds of things.
The next, only thing is the 5.125, 5.1 million for the city parks.
Right. As all of you know, we talked about, and you allocated some budget dollars for parks and recreation in terms of the pine beetles, removing trees that's infested with pine beetles, security lighting in the areas. We're having problems with vandalism at many of our parks, and this will help secure those parks, as well as funding to help upgrade Buddy Butts Park, a new bridge, repair the road, putting in a motor craft, a track in the area in order to give people an opportunity to go there and race their, whatever it is they've raced, their four-wheelers and all of those kinds of things that are out on the streets now racing. This will give them a venue-
Go-karts.
Go-karts, there you go, thank you. Go-karts, in terms of a venue to go out and do that type racing. There is also a Mississippi River Basin there, a model there, and that's to restore that basin, that model, in order to attract tourists to that area, so that they can just see how the basin works, and how the Mississippi River flows in the Delta and down through the Gulf. So that's what all of that is for.
When you're finished.
Couple of questions.
Okay. That he's, you know, let's let him finish the whole thing.
Yeah, I thought that was finished.
Yeah, no, no, we got to, we got to get to blight.
I thought we were all-
The blight elimination, funding for that, I think Mr. Foot, Councilman Foot, and Councilman Hartley, serving on a committee or attended a committee in terms of blight elimination, not only for residential, but commercial blight as well. The blight elimination for residential, $240,000, as well as commercial elimination, blight elimination of $2 million. The council did approve some additional code enforcement officers to help with that, and this is to make sure that we have the funding in order to take care of the blight, that we have the dollar amount that both of you mentioned instead of legislation, this is the probation piece of it.
And that's a total of 4.2 and some change?
Yes.
The other, is that right?
2.24.
Four, four?
4.2. Okay.
It is four-
Yeah, that's the-
Wait, say again?
The convention center parking lot is also in-
Okay, yes, got it. Okay. All right, y'all both raised your hands at the same time, Mr. Hartley and Mr. Foot. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Just a couple of things. One is, when we were speaking with our lobbyists, is it possible to have information, budgeted information, on what the city of Jackson have budgeted for some of these issues? And in a sense, letting them know that we're putting skin in the game first. And, you know, we, for us, Fire Department, Police Department, we got skin in the game. We're doing our best first, and so if it's possible, can we provide that information to the lobbyists as well? The second thing is, we brought up the Fire Department. Recently, I had a conversation with some of the firefighters, and they were saying they, they respond to a lot of abandoned properties, and I'm sure a lot of them are state properties. Is it possible for us to at least have that information, and potential cost of how much we are, you know, using of our own budget to respond to state-owned properties? And again, just to buffer it, you know, our conversation and our request, that we need additional funding, if not just for our issues, but issues caused by the state as well. The other thing, roads, was that being addressed in here as well? Roadways, paving, and so forth?
No, not for our road, because we have, you know, 1% of the road we have-
Okay, and the only reason I bring that up is because, again, we have a lot of government service, state services within the city of Jackson, they're using our roads. And if nothing else, maybe our lobbyists need to remind them that, hey, you know, you guys not, I mean, we're paying that 1%, it's coming out of the city of Jackson's taxpayers, but they have nothing other than service and using our roads. And also, the last thing is blight elimination. I'm with Councilman Foot in his statement, I think we need about $20 million. And again, that may come from, we have a certain amount, albeit small amount, that we're already put forth in the city's budget. We need to get a lot more money from the state, and they need to help us get money from the federal government, you know, for the capital city. So I'm still, you know, working through the Blight Committee, perhaps that's the way to go, but it's going to take at least that amount in order to clean up and get back on track with blight in the city of Jackson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, a couple of items here, on the front, first page, right towards the bottom, it says- The couple of items here on the front, first page, right towards the bottom, it says, next to last one, City of Jackson requests a million 500,000 from the state to pay grade and widen the roads along Northwest Industrial Park for Department of Public Works. Is this the same industrial parks that PSC Commissioner Stamps was telling us about? They're trying to, you know, do lots of, you know, take advantage of all the data centers that are being built out by Madison, you know, in Madison County and take advantage of those opportunities out there? If so, I think it is, if it is, then that needs to be part of our discussion. In other words, it needs to be part of the, you know, hey, this is a big economic opportunity for Heinz County in conjunction with all the data centers that are being built in Madison County and blah, blah, and the. And it's been endorsed by the Public Service Commission as part of our sales pitch on that particular item. Take the next page up here, the third whereas down. It says, the City of Jackson requests 380,000 funding from the state of Mississippi to purchase cybersecurity software for the Department of Transit. I remember when Dr. Reed was telling us about this, but I can't remember anything about it. I mean, I don't know, I just wonder if it might be better to be more specific in, you know, why the specific, you know, there's lots of things, cybersecurity software out there. Then lastly, on the same item that Councilman Hartley was talking about, I know that in the past, the legislature has passed and actually got through like a million dollars or 2 million dollars for the parking lot over down there by the convention center, only to have it get line item vetoed out by the governor. And when I look at these, I wouldn't put these together. I wouldn't put them in the same item. In other words, if there's a parking lot for the convention center, put that into the paragraph, you know, parking lot for the convention center. But I think blight needs to be separate by itself. And I don't think we're asking for near enough. And it's confusing to me to say elimination of blight, 240,000 dollars. Commercial blight, 2 million dollars. Well, we do have a lot of commercial blight and we could spend 2 million dollars on commercial blight without any problem. But we could spend 20 million dollars on residential blight without any problem either. So I think in this case, we need to ask for a much bigger number. And if they want to try to negotiate it down, it'd be one.
Would you, would you like to make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Foot?
Okay.
Or Mr. Hartley?
If you want to make a motion, I'll make it. I'll just say that elimination of, maybe we should call it residential blight as a way to differentiate it from commercial blight. And I would say 20 million dollars. And then I'd say, commercial blight, 5 million dollars. And I would not put the parking lot in the same paragraph.
As an amendment as well, you can just separate that out?
Okay, so I would separate as amendment.
It just starts with whereas.
Whereas, City of Jackson requests 2 million dollars for a parking lot across from Jackson Convention Center for the Department of Planning and Development, under, you know, overseen by the Department of Planning and Development.
And if.
Mr. Hartley?
You think that's okay?
Yes, if there's.
You can change the numbers if you want to.
And I agree that we need to tease that blight out because it's going to another subcommittee of the House and they are, they are, they are very much cooperative and working with us.
Oh, they agree with us. This is a really big problem.
And so. And so, yes, I think we need to tease it out and I'm willing to second that, Madam Chair.
Do you, okay, let's give our clerk of the council a minute here. Did you get that?
So Shenique Jordan, clerk of council, so are we removing a whereas or are we just adding a whereas?
We're adding a whereas, but we're changing the numbers. They want to change the numbers. To whereas, the City of Jackson hereby requests 25 million dollars, correct? In funding from the state of Mississippi to support the elimination of blight.
Residential blight.
Residential blight of 20 million and commercial blight of 5 million. Is that right? Isn't that what y'all said?
Yeah, Councilman Foot, if, were you talking about having a whole another resolution on this, on just for blight?
What I'd do is take this whereas it is right now.
Okay, so we can just amend what we have.
Amend the numbers for the blight.
And then we're creating.
And then create a new whereas for the parking lot across from the convention center.
Yes, sir, okay.
The parking lot, whereas is one whereas by itself. And then the 20 million and the 5 million are together.
The 20 million is for residential blight and the 5 million is for commercial blight. Legal, are we keeping on track with this? How are we doing? All right, and then the next whereas would be, whereas renovations to the parking lot across from Jackson. That needs to make sense.
I've got one other question back on the second page, and this is just a question.
Wait, wait, just a minute. Did you get this? I mean, are we, you're.
Where is this, I do?
And we can, does that sound right legal? Are we okay? All right, Mr. Foot?
My other one is in the fifth whereas up from the bottom, where the city require, requests 5.125 million from the state to provide security at city parks, 100,000 dollars.
Wait, on the first page, the fifth?
Second page, excuse me, second page, fifth whereas up from the bottom. Says, the City of Jackson requests 5,125,000 in funding from the state of Mississippi to provide security at city parks, and it's got parentheses, 100,000 dollars, and remove dead trees at city parks caused by pine beetle infestation and other pestilences. 500,000 dollars. I'm curious, what are the, what are the other pestilences? I mean, what is, I'm not sure what a pestilence is.
It may be those pine, pine beetles.
Now, the pine beetles? I just, I may, I assume they're a pestilence. I was just curious, or anything else? Anyway, that was just a question I had, not, I wasn't trying to amend this or anything.
Point of order, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the amendment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We got so carried away with our editing. All right, Mr. Foot and made the motion and Mr. Hartley made the second to make those changes that we were discussing regarding blight and also separating and creating the second, another, a separate whereas for the parking lot at the convention center. Any additional discussion on those, on those proposed amendments?
Just, just one, Madam President. Just Mr. Foot, do you think we would be able to get more mileage if we created something separate, separate resolution for the blight? And where it wouldn't be, you know?
Keep in mind that this is just a working document for the lobbyists. This is not what, it will be voted on, but I just like.
Okay, I was thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, bills will have to be created. And so we're really just creating a working list. And it's, this is important though, and I just want to remind everybody that, and that's why she's got to get this meeting with the Heinz County delegation because she'll have to get sponsors for each one of these items. But I do want to remind everybody, especially those new to the council, that the Heinz County delegation is looking for a unanimous vote on this document. Of well, of those of us here. Because any kind of dissent is going to put, is going to give them pause on pursuing any of these items. So that's why it's important for us to work through this and make sure we fully support what this document is, because it is the working document. So thank you, Mr. Hartley, for asking that question because it reminded me to bring all that out.
And the reason I ask is because we might be able to use the document in other meetings and stuff too with the state. And that's the only reason I suggested. But I'm willing to.
It's going to take on a life of its own.
Okay, I'm willing to vote.
Yeah, soon, if we're really fortunate and this works well, you're going to have a proposed bill to take, to, into those meetings. All right, so any other discussion or questions about this item, about these items as these amendments as discussed? If not, all in favor? Mr. Banks? Thank you very much. Yes, sir, I heard you. Thank you. All right, so we now, we had a vote of 6-0.
Yeah, question, what's that last, last vote on the amendment to this?
It's on the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we have the item before us as amended. And I'm talking about the whole document. Now, do we have any other, did you get your question answered about pestilence, Mr. Foot?
Yes, ma'am, I just.
All right, so.
Answered, but that's okay. Termites.
Google it, Mr. Foot. All right, so any other questions or comments about this document before I take it to a vote? I really want to hear what y'all have to say. Everybody good? All right? All in favor of the document as amended? Thank you, Mr. Banks. All right, we have a vote of 6-0. This can get cleaned up and to the lobbyists. You are the best. Thank you. All right, awesome. All right, item, next item, please, item three, is it three? Yes.
Order authorizing amendment number two to the agreement with Redmond Lawn and Cleaning Service LLC for city right-of-way maintenance services.
So moved, second.
We have a motion. Thank you, Mr. Banks. All right, we have a motion and two seconds on this item. Could someone, Mr. Wright, explain this to us, what we're, what we need to do on this? Please.
This is item number three?
Three, yes, sir.
This is to extend the. I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. This is to extend the contract of right-of-way maintenance that we've had in place for the last three months. And the reason we're doing it is because that contract expired the end of October and this will give us some additional time in order to get the RFP on the street to get other vendors to bid on these, this contract of right-of-way maintenance. So this is just an extension of the contract that we already have in place.
Thank you. Any, any questions, colleagues? Mr. Foot, well, y'all, y'all are both raising your hands at the same time. I'm gonna let Mr. Foot go first this time since you went last.
Madam President, I can't support this. I'm frustrated that this has always been in emergency status. This is actually the second extension. It got extended last month from, from the end of September to the end of 30. And we were led to believe at the, at the beginning when it first came up that, well, we don't have time to get the grass cut and it's an emergency and, and so we need to just give these two contracts out and with no RFP and competitive bidding. And so we were led to believe that they would be doing an RFP. And we still haven't gotten, they haven't done an RFP yet. I'm frustrated because I've been told by a friend that, that the grass at the Greenwood Cemetery on the other side of, you know, downtown, still hasn't been completely cut. So I'm not sure who's overseeing to make sure that the vendors or the contractors are actually getting all the work done that they're supposed to do. And then the last reason is that it's the middle of November and cutting grass, the grass doesn't grow near as much now as it did then. So I don't think it's an emergency. So I, I would, you know, I can't support this. I think we should do the RFP and, and the way it's supposed to be done, get competitive bids. Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I'd like to follow up on that if I may. This is, we voted on an extension last month, did we not?
Yeah.
And for one month.
Okay, for one month. So this is for an additional month?
This is for an additional month because the RFP is not on the street yet. And we're working with legal to get it out so that we can have other contractors to bid on it.
Yes.
For full 12 months.
And I'm.
And grass is still growing and we're trying to hold down complaints because we know that if the grass is not being cut, we're going to get, you're going to get calls, we're getting calls.
I'm getting calls now. And that's part of my question here is, I'm getting calls concerning the cemetery on Capitol Street. And, and I would love to have that RFP out. And I thought we, last month, we said, hey, we're just going to extend it a month. So we won't be looking at another extension, will we?
No, we will not be looking for another extension.
Okay, and the other part is, on the RFP, is it possible that, and I know time is of the essence and you don't, we don't want to belabor this, this process. But is it possible that we could at least see some of the conditions that's called forth? I have residents reaching out to me and asking me, well, are they going to do this, 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 and this? And I'm like, well, I'm not into that process, so I can't tell you. But if we can assure them that, you know, they're going to do the complete job. And I'm not saying send it out to the council and we deliberate over a week or anything like that. But just a quick heads up or a phone call, hey, this is what it includes. I think that would be very helpful so we can go back to our constituents and say, hey, we're going 12 months. We're allowing time to get as many vendors as possible and they're going to be doing A, B, C, and D.
And we've learned a lot from this process in terms of complaints and recommendations from the residents in terms of what they would like to see. And this RFP will have all of those specifics in it. In terms of cutting grass, trimming, blowing, and not blowing it into the drain.
Right.
But picking it up and removing it, those kinds of things. Removing the litter, all of that. That's part of this RFP. And that's what we're putting together.
So I can go back and tell the constituents that. Okay, and so Godspeeds and go ahead and get it done because we needed it done last year.
We understand.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
The reason we put those in place before was, it was just quick and dirty in terms of getting the grass cut, during the grass seeding, cutting season so that we could put something together that's more specific and definitive of what you would like to see and what the residents would like to see as well. So we urge your support on this.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Griselle?
I was gonna say, I fully support this. I don't want to pay my yard man either. In fact, we've got that little cool stop a few weeks ago. I was praying that my grass would stop, but it didn't. I had to get it cut the other day and I'm going to have to go back out there this weekend. So we got to get the grass cut. I don't think one more month extension is going to hurt this city. I think the citizens deserve to continue to see the grass, the rightaways and cemeteries, the parks, everything that they are charged with cutting. So I would definitely support this and actually completely support this, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griselle. Any other comments on this item? I just want to echo that I too support it. I mean, it's.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, look, I support this. I just want to say, because I was confused because I heard cemetery. This is only about an extension for specifically right-of-way cuttings, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Where the cemetery, it says, it says for city right-of-way maintenance services. That's what's in the.
That's item number three.
There's another item.
Number four is cemetery.
There's another.
Yeah, so we're, but we're on item three.
Yeah, but the boat, I was talking about.
Okay, so, but Mr. Banks is correct. What we're, what is before us right now is right-of-way. And I, for one, am going to support it too because I don't think our citizens deserve to have overgrown rightaways for a month. Go ahead, Mr. Banks.
I don't think anybody's in support of it.
Mr. Banks, were you finished?
I'm good, I just, I got confused because I'm finished.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I was taking from Councilman Foot and just commenting, when we get to the cemetery, we can discuss that. But yes, as long as you can get assured that this is it, we're not coming back from an extension. We're getting those bids out there and we're going to come up with a good, a good crew to go out and clean up those rightaways.
All right.
I support it, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Okay, colleagues, are there any other questions or comments about this item? All right, all in favor? Oppose, wait, Mr. Banks? Okay, opposed? Okay, it is a vote of five to one. All right, item four.
Order authorizing amendment number two to the agreement with PDT Logistics LLC for mowing and grounds maintenance within the city of Jackson Cemeteries.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a point that the question, I'm not against cutting grass. What I'm for is doing procurement for services as the state law sets out. What I'm for is doing procurement for services as the state law sets out.
Yeah.
That's all. That's why I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, and again, I bring up what my constituents are saying, they're having some problems. So whatever you can do to encourage the, this present contractor, especially if we renew it for another month, to do a thorough job, especially the cedar line, I'm getting, still getting a lot of complaints. So, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Wright, this is an additional 30 days, right?
That's right.
And we will be getting this RFP done, and we will be getting the 12-month contract in place.
Yes.
A 12-month contract. And when is the timeline on that?
In terms of getting the contract?
Well, to getting the RFP out and getting, and what do we hope is that the end, when's the end date on that?
Hi, I'm going to have to yield to legal. It's in legal review now.
Oh, it's in legal?
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. I've worked with Ms. Weathers on this, on both of, on these two procurements, and they're back to her to review. Hopefully, there's not anything further to be done, and they'll be advertised next week.
Excellent.
Advertised next week, okay.
That's, that would be mine.
Okay, here, I guess, is the question, and this is why I appreciate Mr. Foot's frustration. Are we, are we going to have, are y'all going to come back to us in 30 days and say we have to do another extension?
That's been my question.
No, we're not coming back to you for another 30 days. We will.
Okay. We're about to wrap it up.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Wright.
Just one more question on Mr. Wright.
I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I have one more question on Mr. Wright.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Hey, do we have a large pool of folks out here that can do that work? I mean, you know, if we're not, if I'm getting complaints now concerning the present contractor, is there more options out there? Or we won't know until we put the RFP?
I'm sorry, we'll have to put it on the street and just see who all will be available to do this type of work. We're also going to utilize the list that planning and development use in terms of maintaining their lots and state-owned properties that's doing cutting. They have a group that does that as well, so we'll be looking at that list of contractors that we've already certified that can do this work. And we're also looking at maybe splitting this up, not just have two contractors to do it, but maybe splitting it up into, you know, quatrants and...
Like zones within the city?
Zone, that's right.
Okay.
So it can be better maintained.
Good.
By more than just one person, that they'll be responsible for a zone.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Ah.
How did you vote? Okay, sorry, I didn't see. All right, opposed? Okay, it's a vote of five to one. All right, item five.
Order authorizing payment for additional legal fees during fiscal year 2025 to sue the Richardson Esquire and the law firm of Patrick Townsend and Stockton LLP for representation of the City of Jackson in United States of America et al. versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi, case number 312-CV-790-HTW-LGI-USDCSD Mississippi in the United States of America versus the City of Jackson, case number 322-CV-00686-HTW-LGI-USDCSD Mississippi and other related matters.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got, we have a motion. This is, Ms. Richardson is related to water. There she is. Hello, hello, Ms. Richardson.
She's on mute, too.
I see her. Hello, welcome.
I'm off mute.
Yeah, thank you. Terry, did you want to just give us a brief explanation on what it says?
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. This is just to approve basically the expenditure of the money that's been budgeted by the legal department for support from outside counsel in both of these pending cases, the consent decree that's basically stayed right now for the Clean Water Act. We're under a stipulated order on that, and then there's the interim stipulated order for drinking water. But she is providing us with assistance on, on both of those cases and, you know, matters that are related to it.
It is very highly technical work. I understand. All right, colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Foot?
I'd be interested, so this is work that got started that you've done since October the 1st of 2024, is that correct?
That is correct, and it's a continuation of work that I've been doing for the City of Jackson since pre-pandemic.
Can you, can you give us kind, I didn't realize there was still ongoing, you know, matters between the United States of America and the City of Jackson. Can you, can you give us kind of an idea of what, what their ongoing discussions are?
Well, as you know, that both the drinking water system and the sewer system are under orders.
Right.
We're still, the City of Jackson is still a defendant in the case. We're still working with Department of Justice. They have, originally, they wanted to amend the drinking water order to duplicate a lot of the good things that we were able to get into the sewer order, so we've spent time talking to them about that, but now they've decided that they want to do an interim consent decree. And so at some point in the next year, which we, I think that they wanted to get it all done before the change in administration, that's not going to happen, that we would negotiate this new consent decree. The other thing that to watch out for is at some point, it is my goal, and I'm sure it's your goal, too, is that the sewer system and the water system are assets of the City of Jackson, and it is, I think, important for a city, especially with a large overburdened population, to, for the city to be the one running the sewer and water system. It might be in a different type of management structure than what it is now, so we need to get things set up the best we can to order to facilitate taking these systems back and working with EPA and the state on doing that.
So...
And right now, there is not a lot of work going on, where I'm probably spending about, you know, sometimes it's very little, sometimes depending on what's going on with the state or the court, it could be about 6,000 a month. But when things get busy, it can, it can get really busy, and I think it's just best not to have to come back and ask for money, and it could be that, I'm, I'm trying to control the budget the best I can, and that way we can make sure that whatever comes up in this year, we'll have the money and the, and the, be ready to jump on it when we need to.
A couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
Madam President, you talked about change of administration. Are you talking about the change of administration at the federal level?
No, sir, I'm talking about the...
At the federal level?
It's federal.
No, no, well, actually, that change in administration, yes.
Okay.
We're going to have a new president that probably has a little different idea on how the EPA and Department of Justice should be run. Don't know what that is yet, but it's definitely going to be different. That's what I was talking about.
So one other follow-up question. So the catalyst for your legal work, you said 6,000 or what are so far this year? I guess the...
Well, about, about a month. It could be less, it could be more.
Okay. So is the catalyst coming from the city or is it coming from the EPA or the DOJ?
Coming from the EPA and Department of Justice.
Okay, so they're calling out, reaching out to you, and you're having to do legal matters with them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so the 90,000, is that for the, is that what we budgeted for the year? Or we budgeted?
For the year.
That's for the year, okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. I appreciate your assistance.
Yeah, I'd point out, I don't know if Ms. Richardson will do this, but last year we had a 90,000 budget, and I think she spent a little less than 70,000 of it.
Okay.
I think is what, what she told me, so, I mean, it's not a caveat to spend 90,000. It's...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Mr.?
I know the City of Jackson has a limited, limited resources, and we want to be smart with how we use those funds.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I'd like to also thank Ms. Richardson for all the work you're doing and coordinating these discussions with the EPA. I'm read here, you're also giving the City of Jackson a 35% discount?